Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield, City of Greenfield Zoning Board of Appeals. It is Thursday, June 12th, 2025, and this surprisingly is our regular meeting. A chair statement. This meeting is being recorded by the zoning board of appeals. Any other folks? If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, subsection 20G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Call the meeting to order. Roll call of members present are?
Peter Rosina.
Jim Wedd.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
Charles Roberts.
David Singer.
Okay, Mr. Clerk. Right, Dave.
Said at this time he kept going.
Oh, yes, you may record. Usually you raise your hand while I'm speaking. Okay, thank you. Anybody else recording? Okay, sorry, Peter, go ahead.
This appeal is a continuation for March 20th, 2025.
Okay, it's an application, not an appeal.
Excuse me, application, sorry. I give you from March 20th, 2025, the application of Cameron Ward for property located 305 Wall Street Assessors, MAP 88 Lot 18, which is located in General Industrial GC zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections 200-8.3, 200-8.4, and appendix A, table of usage of the zoning ordinance in order to allow cat cafe slash lounge at this location.
And sitting on the panel are?
Peter Rosina.
Jim Wedd.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
David Singer. Okay, Cameron, please. Just before you speak, so this is a continuation of a public hearing that was started in March, and the board continued for more information, and wonderfully, the applicant has provided more information, so we're continuing it tonight, and I feel comfortable that the board will be able to terminate you tonight. So I'd go over your amended application that you presented.
Jokes.
Just generally.
You got it. So after our meeting, I got in touch with Mr. Ward, asked for specifics as to what the board was looking for, and he gave me a list, a copy of the state regulations of such facilities, which we had. Again, I submitted this with all with a letter. I went through some of the stuff that that is, came to our attention through Kitty Cat Cafe in Peabody, MAP, which we've been working with to get this up and running. So anything that was, we had to search for weeks. We had that, we had, we had the list of veterinarians at the partner, as well as shelters. It's a small list. Yeah, but the folks at the Kitty Cat Cafe said, don't let that be discouraging to you as you get up and running and get established. You may find that you get more interest as you grow, et cetera. A signed and dated commitment from that animal shelter is included, as well as the vet's office revised interior layout of the building. So, which you should have gotten at larger scale, because the portion of what we're looking to use as quarantine is actually not in the 800 square feet that we're using for a cat cafe. So it's separate from
It's down the same location.
Same, same location, same property in another part of the building. It's 17,000 square foot building that I own, and the cat cafe is a small part of that. But we found that instead of trying to build out in that cat cafe and reduce that small space that it is already, it would be better not just to have that space for cat cafe, but also for quarantine purposes, to remove the animal from. And we found that to be true too when we were talking with Animal Control Officer Colleen, and I don't want to butcher his last name, so Colleen G. But he agreed that, you know, moving it to another part of the facility was a great idea. And you also, again, have our business plan, which is not foreign to us. We did. We had that. Thank, thanks to the folks, the Kitty Cat Cafe, Ori Harrell, helped us with that. And so I
Can you point on this map?
This shows I'm sorry, yeah.
It shows where everything is, right?
Yeah, this didn't get, this didn't get highlighted. So this is your quarantine room, and it'll be right here.
Okay, and how is that separate?
This facility that we're looking at is up front here.
That's what you're looking to
Yes, and you
That's what you're looking to use.
This is, this is the area that we're proposing for the cat cafe. And then you'd walk outside the building, across the parking lot, into separate part of the building where this room would be separated and have privacy from the cats.
So, just to help you, on the site plan, site plan, you are proposing that you increase the area that will be defined under the use from this space to this space and this
And that space, isn't it?
And we have like a size?
It is, yeah. I'm sorry, again, it's six by nine. And I, I thought that I, when I did that, I submitted this, but you may not have received this portion. You might have gotten a smaller copy, but I'm happy to provide the one that the folks at Copycat.
You want to leave it here?
No pun intended, Copycat, I thought that was unique, but here I am.
Copy dog?
Yeah, so I am happy to leave this, even though it's got adjust that, that area is, oh, you've got the highlighted version.
This is what you said.
So this is here. So that's what I sent you? Okay, so I did not submit this, but I'm happy to.
Okay, I do
Yep.
I just want to make sure when we talk about it that we're identifying the space properly.
Yep.
I'm being technical on that.
No problem.
Can you just remind me the state, the proposed area, what the overall dimensions are of that?
Yeah.
Everyone else on the other side?
It probably was. It's eight, it's 800 square feet. It's 20 feet wide by 38 or 40 long.
Yeah, 20 by 40.
20 by, yeah. 22, 38 maybe? That's how I got the 800.
All right-ish.
I want to say it's a little less than 40, but it's something wide.
And that would be over here?
Nope, right here.
Camelot's not here.
That's Camelot. This is Camelot Carpet Cleaning Company that I
Oh, that's you, okay, got you. And, and the entrance to this is
Right there.
Right here?
Yes.
Just procedurally, the space you're putting right now for the cat cafe is in a certain area, without taking another portion, then basically kind of finding it as a different use, because that space right now is certain type of usage.
It's a bathroom, it's a bathroom.
Which you're gonna, that becomes now another part of this application for special use not defined in the ordinance.
Correct.
Good question. Thank you. All right, you got, are you finished with the presentation?
Yeah, I think, I'm sure, yeah, absolutely.
Any board members have any questions?
I'll wait.
You'll wait?
Yeah.
Okay, the only, I don't think, looking through this, I was very pleased to see all the things that you did. I'm glad to hear that you spoke with the animal control officer, and when did that happen?
I want to say that we spoke to him on multiple occasions, but that after our meeting, we actually asked him to come and visit the location. And so it was briefly after that, might have been right around that May. It was certainly before the April 8 email that I sent in all of the documents, because I referred a meeting with him. So it was between that March 20th original meeting and then this, this April 8. And we also had conversation with Michael Thoreau. Kelly Goddard is, there's a group of people that are involved with this thing. I'm sitting here because I own the building. But there's other, several other people that are involved, and they, Kelly was one that spoke with the Florida Health, like, because of, you know, served safe and serving food and such.
And this all happened after the last meeting? And Eric, have we received anything in writing from the animal enforcement officer?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, requested by email several times, several reminders, and now once did he respond back to me.
You have met with that person?
He came right out to the door.
Had he gave you some set of instructions or suggestions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are they in writing, or they're just things they remember?
Remember. And, and my understanding is that there are, there's the animal control laws.
Well, that's what I was gonna get.
There's the Board of Health rules, regulations, there's state guidelines that would be subjected to inspection, et cetera, and obviously
Yeah.
We want to set up along those lines.
And the regs that you, you put in your, your amended application, this information is given to you by someone you spoke with and said this is what
It's right on the website.
And you've read this, you understand what you have to conform to, right?
I do understand that it's, it's a very gray area. Okay, that document is set up by the State of Massachusetts Department of Agriculture for shelters and rescues. We're neither. There's nothing set up for a cat cafe. It's a unique style of business, and so it's gray. We're not sheltering or rescuing animals. These animals are all vetted, and they are, are in this area almost as a fostering situation. We're more like a fostering place. But in talking with Ori Harrell at the Kitty Cat Cafe, if you want it, if you want it, when the time comes for the state to come in and check you out, if you're adhering to all of these, you're good, you're good. So yes, we do know.
Okay, good, because I think during our discussion, we'll cross-reference these and incorporate these into the
That's what I was looking at in the hallway, and I, I'm not memorizing that. But I have a copy, yes, yes.
Okay, that's my questions, thank you.
Do you want the exact date? I do have in my appointment book that.
Oh, no, I don't know. It's on the top of your head, yes, no. I just want to make sure it was after
It was after, and he came out in person.
That I know that the city knows what you're doing.
Right, and he, he thought it was a better idea. Like Cindy and I both talked about the pattern of launching them separate.
Yeah, so he's the one who made that.
Yeah, I weren't happy with how it proposed to the cats.
We made the suggestion, and we were making it selfishly to keep cat cafe space, cat cafe space. But he's, he was the one that said he'd prefer to see it outside of the realm of the area. Just putting a closet or building out an area of quarantine still is in the same room, it's the same footprint. So having them either, and many times, as you'll read, if this, if this is a cat that is owned by a shelter and up for adoption, and that cat needs to be quarantined, it goes back to the shelter. They're better equipped to handle that than we will.
Just if something happens while the
Hundred percent.
Like an instant, instant remedy.
We come in and you'll see that in the Massachusetts law. If the Massachusetts inspector comes in and says there's a problem here with this cat, boom, right there, quarantine.
Okay.
And so, yes.
What is, what are the cats being quarantined for?
Great question. I'm a carpet cleaner. But I would imagine there are veterinarians that we're working with, there's the animal control, and if we're in there, we're cleaning all of the time, these animals have already been vetted, but we have to pick up on anything that's going on with the animal. And you, as a responsible owner, you call the vet just like you would, yes.
You're taking it from the cat cafe to the quarantine areas. There's some protocol, cat is got rabies or whatever, you're protecting other people in the facility?
Yes, I mean, that's why that room is separated from the rest of the facility.
And that's documents, you've got an in-house manual or something saying this happened.
Being on the facility, so rabies, December, everything has to be
That was one thing, Colleen made sure any animal that's on site has to have a rabies certificate, which is almost a no brainer, but yeah.
I, I understand, but you're taking another space and re, refinding it. Unfortunately, between here and there, you're going through another space.
No, going outside.
So you're going
Outside to another area, which you walk into the bathroom. First room on the left is the bathroom, and that's quarantine. That, yes.
Question I have, Mr. Chair, and me, Eric, if these floor plans come in from, from a record keeping perspective, you've got the cat cafe with 70 square feet in this, do you need a document that says, here's spaces in that? Because if they leave, doesn't it have to go back to another use?
That'll be up to the new owner.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, but they, they should see the, the drawing that's saying these
Yeah, I mean, the official file has the
Okay, that's what I'm asking, yes. So there, there's a, all this is information is in the file.
Correct.
So at some point in the future, another person comes in, they know that that 50 square feet space is not, not used, not resident, or not industrial or whatever. So they would have to ask for it to be re, redefined as not a cat cafe.
Depending on the use that they want to put in there, if it's another by, if it's a by right use under the zoning ordinance, then it would just be a site plan review, depending on the size of it. Under the building code, could be a change of use, and structurally, and under the building code, things might have to be done.
I'm just talking through procedurally what would happen. Now it's been zoned for this, approved for this. Once they leave, someone could just go by rights and say, okay, we're not gonna turn it back into an office space.
I would imagine they'd turn it back into a bathroom.
Or we, we can decide, you know, how this, if we're going to decide yes on the permit, we can decide how it, how it moves.
Exactly, you could run with the land or the owner.
People say, you have to decide.
Yeah.
Thank you. That means, that means that instead of giving that space the special permit, we give you the special permit.
Okay.
So when you go to change ownership, sell it, you, that, those people would have to come back to the zoning board and ask for a special permit again.
Gotcha.
I mean, I'm not saying we've decided that, but that's the difference.
Understood.
Which means that it would be helpful if, at some point, you gave us all the names of the people who you think are going to have a controlling interest in what's going on. This is a for-profit business, correct?
It is.
So if, if you have a corporate name, or you have people who are, who are the prominent owners, give us that list, please.
Which is right out of the
And then we'll, we'll incorporate that, if, if that's where we go. We might say it's okay for the space, but that's what we would need.
Thank you.
So that's a good question.
We're willing to work with you too. If you want me to build out a six by nine area inside that, we can, we can do that as well. You know, a little bit more expense, but that's no big deal. The, the, the thing that we really liked was what Colleen said in being separate. When we visited the, the facility in Peabody, we, we thought it was strange that you'd walk into the isolation, the quarantine room, and then essentially just walk right back out into the cafe. And it was almost like, just felt like cross-contamination was
Yeah.
far easier in a, in a, in a situation like that. And we are blessed in that I happen to be the guy that owns this building, and there's enough space where I can go, well, let's just do it over here, and we can
Well, it will be tied up under the permit.
That's fine.
Okay. But when you, like, when we're talking about quarantine space, I appreciate that post-COVID, our heads might go someplace
Yes, yes.
Kind of intense, but we're also talking about just if a cat's getting a little freaked out and stressed.
Yes.
Right? It's also a quiet space.
Quiet space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I appreciate that, like, from the health perspective, like, you really do need a place to, to put an animal that is presenting as being super safe. But this is also just if the cat starts getting a little bit snarly or pissy.
The cat has a little peepee, so you separate them out.
Bingo, yeah, that's, yeah. So when you say, why would a cat be quarantined? If there is, yeah, there's, if you're noticing things in the animal, it could be some limping. You know, I know that you turn around, these things, they're active animals, and you just, you, you quarantine it until the vet has an opportunity to look at.
I also think that, I think what Peter was saying was that if there is that type of a problem, that it's good that you mentioned that so that the movement of the cat would be outside.
Yes.
Out of the room.
Yes.
In the outside to the quarantine space, rather than he would
Carrying it through another tenant.
Well, like you said, at the other place, you, you, you have the luxury of having another space. Maybe that wouldn't have been the case here, so that's a good point.
Right.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
I just go, yeah, the quarantine room. So you don't see any issue with the fact that you can't check on the cats conveniently? You gotta go outside and go out, you know, so you can't go running in and out and checking in on the cat, yes, sir?
Yeah, one way or the other, you, if you, if I relate back to what I found in Peabody, you're gonna have to go into this area one way or the other, whether you walk 20 feet or you walk 75.
Right.
You've got to, yeah, there needs to be a, a check-in. And the honest, honestly, that, I don't see that space in talking with Ori. It's not like this cat is in there for an extended period of time unless you own the cat. If it's a sheltered animal, that animal goes back to the shelter. That animal goes to a vet and gets, you need to continue to quarantine this animal for 72 hours, or this is medication that this animal needs while in quarantine. And so checking on it periodically is, I, I don't, I, I think it, the, the benefits of having it where it is out of this area outweighs any disadvantage of having it not right in the building, but in the, in the area. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So what we do is we have three hearings tonight. Yours is a continuation hearing, and the next one we'll hear, and the next one we'll hear. Probably take a little break, and then we'll come back and we'll decide each one in the order that they're being given. So yours will be first.
Okay.
So if you wanted to step out now until quarter after seven, because that felt more comfortable, that's fine. If you wanted to go home, that's fine, and you'll, it'll let you know what happens. But if the practical thing would be to come back, and if there's any more questions, at least we can ask.
Yeah, of course, quarter after seven.
Or stay here if you wish. But if you wish to go outside, yeah, I think, we, we have a seven o'clock, a 6:45, a seven o'clock, I think we'll be done by six, 7:50.
Seven fifteen.
At the earliest.
Okay.
Guarantee or anything, but
I know, that's fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Clerk, the next, is it seven, is it quarter up yet?
It's, it's
Have any thoughts? Okay, yeah. Plus, my best, almost on time. Go ahead.
Mr. Clerk. Okay. Application of Nathan Lupo for property located at 12 MAP Avenue, Assessors, MAP 129 Lot 9, which is located in Silver's Presidential, RFP zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-5.3 E2, 200-8.3, and then 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a 20% reduction in required 15-foot side yard setback at this location.
And sitting on the panel are?
Peter Rosina.
Jim Wedd.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
David Singer.
And where, oh, the applicant's online, I believe, right?
He's right here.
All right.
James Street's online.
Oh, I'm sorry, my, my bad.
That's good.
Seven fifteen. Okay. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'm Nathan Lupo. I own the property with my wife passionately. Thank you guys for hearing this tonight. Well, I can tell you more about the project, whatever you're gonna, so last July, we had our second child. We currently live in a two-bedroom, one-bath. This proposed plan would turn our residence into a three-bedroom, two-bath. We actually started this process in 2023. We've been through many renditions of trying to add to this house, and this has been the most economical one, the most feasible ones that we've found. And, yeah, we're, we're excited. We definitely need the room. Our, our ranch is about 1,100 square feet. We have two kids, as I mentioned, my wife and I, and a dog. So we are very excited if this project could, could go forward.
Thank you. Just for the record, this, on the last page of the application is a, is a survey, the land survey. I know you have the house plans as well. So it's the gray area, that's, that's the area that you're expanding, and this is the beach that you're looking for, right? That little
That is correct, yeah.
Feet at the sideline.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on the board?
It could be 12 dot O Y feet from the property line.
From the neighbor's property line, Rachel Davis, correct.
Do we have anything from Rachel? Gee, I, I don't remember seeing any, no, or weather or anything.
No, we have not received anything.
Oh, unspoken.
Yeah, yeah, I just clarify, we have nothing saying no, nothing, but nothing saying yeah.
We have not received any comments related to this application.
Thank you. You know, I made a mistake on the last hearing, I didn't ask for public input. So when we finish this, I'm gonna, nobody's here, but if anybody's online for the cat cafe that wanted to speak at the first hearing, stay on, and I'll recognize you after this is over. Sorry for the mistake. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so I did take it upon myself to try and talk with every neighbor who would have a visual sight of this new addition. I caught Rachel at her house on Tuesday evening. She stated she had not received a letter, but she admitted she doesn't check her mail as regularly as she should. She said she has no objections, and she wished the addition the best. She's been a great neighbor, and she understands. Mentioned many of her family members have kids, and she kind of understood. I don't have that in writing.
I think it wants to be similar.
I have, yeah.
Anybody else?
So you're asking for a three-foot extension of the, of the building, basically, to get it off property line, off, you know?
Correct, so, so as I understand it, it's a 15-foot side yard setback. We're asking it down to 12.05.
Yeah.
If you go to A1, the
This isn't, right? This is
Right, so that's 12 feet, so it's a 15-foot setback instead of 15.
Three feet, right.
Yeah, so I mean, just looking at the floor plan, I mean, this, you know, if you just made this building three feet short, bedrooms would still function, and, yeah, and, yeah, and the house wouldn't, wouldn't be, wouldn't require variance.
So both the architect and the builder said that these are very small bedrooms. I'm not, the architect said, don't move forward this addition if you gotta make the bedroom smaller. I mean, we really would be reducing bedroom number two down to roughly 100, just over 100 square feet. Currently, bedroom two in the house is about 132 square feet, and that's tiny for, for, for a small child. So I just, our builder said he would have concerns if we didn't, weren't granted the three feet. He just doesn't think we'd be very happy with, with the end result.
And you looked at ways of maybe adding out into this part of the yard?
Yeah, we did. I mean, unfortunately, just adding out towards the back of the house, the costs were astronomical. Building anything today, I, I just shrug some days at how much things cost. I mean, this is, like I said in, in the opening, just, this is the most economically feasible, smallest addition.
Yeah, it is, the roof lines line up, it's very easy to build.
Yeah, that's correct.
One question. Your new addition, what does it face towards Rachel Davis? Does it face the garage, yard?
She has, that's her backyard.
It's her backyard, okay.
Yeah, she has a fence, or she has a fence, which I think, she has a privacy mesh that covers that fence. She does have a pool in the back.
Just has a shed right on the property line, right?
She does have a shed back there, yes, yeah.
Yeah, over here somewhere.
Correct. So it's actually very hard to, I cannot see into her backyard with that, the shed you mentioned, and with the privacy mesh. I think she put it up for the dogs, so, so I can't really see into her yard.
When you, when you designed the house to get to this point, did you confer with the building inspector or someone from the building department to, who told you about the relief that you could ask for? So therefore, you went to this size as a limit? Or how did that, how did that, how did you find out about this?
No, so we, we had originally designed to go, to try to design a second floor to the home. I mean, it was clearly double the budget that we were willing to spend or could spend. So this is what our builder suggested. We, he, he helped us design this. My wife actually drew some of this before we went to the architect. And so I think I got in touch with, with Eric just to try to find out more about side yard setbacks, and he educated me on this, this special permit application.
Great, okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board? All right, I want to stop with your presentation and do what I should have done before. Anybody, any, any participation from the public Anybody, any, any, uh, participation from the public? On this matter? Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, then you can, you can see now, and we'll, again, we'll decide this second. So if you wait around or come back at fifteen, seven thirty, and we'll make it.
Thank you.
Look. Have we opened up?
Oh, is it seven fifteen?
It's a
It's seven o'clock. Yeah, one minute.
Have we had the, you know, the public input to the first?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. For the, um, Cat Cafe, is there anybody online? I don't see anybody here that wants to speak to the Cat Cafe matter? Okay, thank you. I'll close that portion. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any public, is there anything to read into the public for either of these? You know, be from the departments or anything? No. Okay. Let's, let's start the next one.
Application of Roxanne Crocker dash Gare and Nicholas Locos, the property located at one ten James Street, assessors tax pack eighteen lot six, which is located in the urban residential R eight zoning district for variance pursuant to sections two hundred dash eight and seven of the zoning ordinance in order to allow an accessory structure of woodshed to be located within the front yard setback area.
Sitting on the panel will be
Peter Rosny.
Jim Winn.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jones.
David Singer. Uh, okay, the applicant is here. Let it be noted on Zoom. So please, hi. Please, hi. Let us know what you're up to, why you're up to it, and where you're up to it.
Sure. I'm Roxanne Crocker.
Uh, I'm Nick Torlukas. Uh, basically, we have, uh, the only means to heat our house is wood. So since I've lived there, Roxanne and her sister actually own the house, but we live there as a couple with our daughter and part-time with my mother-in-law. So we get the wood delivered. It's about four cords, and we've been doing pallets and tarps that have been destroyed in the weather with the sun, and it's been a mess. It's not attractive. So last summer, I was wanting to build a cover to it. A roof, basically, six posts and a roof. Um, there, you should have pictures of it. I built it thinking it was under the shed limit. I was uninformed. I was very incorrect to do that. Uh, so it's been there for a year and, uh, about a little while ago, uh, the building inspector, Rachel Roberts, I think her name, she drove by and said it looked new. And, uh, said, and that started this process. So I'm, we're hoping to get uh, the variance so that we can excessively access the wood to heat our house, keep it dry. There have been no complaints from the neighbors. It's very much in violation of the front yard setback, but it's attractive. Uh, oh, and my mother-in-law is disabled, and really, there's nowhere else on our property when it's snowing to, to get the wood in a safe way for her or for us, really. Sometimes it's like packed snow and, um,
Yeah.
And, yeah, and so basically, if this shed couldn't be there, we would, that's still where we would have to keep the wood, just with tarps and go back to tarps and pallets.
There's also the potential with my mother, she's disabled and recently diagnosed with Alzheimer's, so she's going to be living with us more and more.
Yeah.
Um, and it could also, the rest of our yard is sloped, and the way that her, the trajectory of her life is going, we'll also need the cover for some mobility devices for her in the near future, potentially. So, and again, yeah, the rest of the yard is sloped. But also, I just want to, Nick already said it was totally our oversight. We did, absolutely did not mean to do this in the wrong order, and we're like, very sorry about that, and just trying to go through what we need to go through to
Hopefully keep it and
Yeah, do the process the way we were supposed to from the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, is that the presentation? You can keep talking. Anybody want to ask some questions?
Um, I do have a question. Um, I don't store wood, so this is an inherent question. It's totally obvious. I apologize. Um, do you need it to be open, completely open on all six sides or?
It doesn't need to be open. In fact, I stopped doing anything on it. Once this process started, I was going to put basically gravel floor down and some nicer runners. I built it over the wood last year, so it still has some pallets under it, and also some steel cabling on the side walls in certain locations. So those were going to be the walls. It does not need to be open, and I could definitely close it in if that is preferable.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm confused, because we have a letter from with an ADA request. Who, who is moving the wood that we need to provide ADA?
Well, all of us are. She, she walks, basically, if she's home by herself, or if she has been with us to help watch our daughter, now in the future, it's going to be us watching her mostly, but
But I'm also thirty-six weeks pregnant with our second child, so she's
She's helping, yeah.
Assisting in the ways that she can.
But, yeah, she's still on her feet. She's not, but she needs to bring wood in. Like I said, it's the only she has been bringing wood in. She would continue to bring wood in for at least a while. So it is her. She is the subject of the ADA request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Her name is Lisa Crocker, and we submitted.
Yeah, she, she has, for her knees, she's medically disabled. She has a handicap placard. And then she's also recently been diagnosed with Alzheimer's, so that's going to change the dynamic in the future, of course, but
Yeah.
Does she bring in the majority of the wood for the wood stove to burn?
She, no, not the majority, but, but she she needs to be able to have access to it.
What is the vehicle? What is the vehicle that you're talking about that's going to go into this woodshed? This machine, as you comment in here, just want to
No, so there's no?
Well, I mean, it, that was something that I had planned as a possibility. It's not, it's not a vehicle that she has. It would be a electric mobility scooter. She might be needing that. She's on her feet now. She spends way too much time on her feet. Uh, so basically, it would be accessible to where we park, and it would be accessible to the driveway so that she could still move around. We're just planning for a long, hard road here, and that was one of the things. There's a a twelve volt solar panel there that I have just for lights in the woodshed, and I could charge her vehicle there, and I was with the gravel. That's, that was where I was thinking we could park it. If, if it's not, uh, she would be very appalled that the idea that she needs that, but, uh, we're thinking that she might need that.
Okay. Hi, I'm David. I understand what happened. Um, but I do need to ask you this question. What would it take to move the shed? I have another spot in mind for you, uh, that would, uh, I believe would comply with our zoning ordinance, but I'd like to know what it would take to move the shed? And also provide the relief that you're looking for. What so, what would it take to move the shed?
Uh, I could move the shed. The roof of the shed, the post would be gone. I would just need, it would need me mobilizing a bunch, a bunch of my friends and possibly one of their tractors and
And partially disassemble, it would have to be disassembled and then reassembled.
But it's not, it's not
I mean, sorry.
Not attached by concrete?
It is. I would take it off the posts. The post, I would do new posts. There's only six posts, so I would do new posts in the new location. But, um, yeah, I, I would like to hear what that plan might be. But, uh, we, I'm thinking, we were thinking about if we had to move it, we'd move it, but we're not entirely sure that there is a place that we could have it. We might, we might end up deciding not to move it if we can't have it there. But I would, I'm very interested in what location you're talking about.
Now, this is the time to do it or only deliberate. Does the board want to hear my ideas?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, true.
Now that we have new books, maybe you could, if you have the ordinance in front of you, Nick and Roxanne. So let's go to five point two. At a section two hundred dash five. And I see Mark Snow is online, and, um, Mark and I have had this conversation. Mark, you're welcome to participate. Okay.
Two.
Hi, everyone.
All right, so everybody gets there. Okay, so additional dimensional requirements. So, um, two hundred five point three two is the table of, uh, dimensional requirements. And the table of dimensional requirements requires a twenty-five foot setback. Far as under, under, uh, C, there's a front yard exception. It says, where the alignment of existing structures on adjoining lots differ from the above required front yard depth, the required minimum front yard may be equal to the adjoining front yards. Now, my impression is, and you live there, so you can hopefully confirm it, is that running north from your property, two, if not three, of those homes are as near to the sidewalk or nearer as your house, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's assume that that applies. Now let's go to six point two. Whatever it is, six four. Does it start to, six point two on the bottom? Okay. So six, six point six point two talks about accessory uses and structures, okay? So the thing we just read was a dimensional requirement for what I'll call the principal residence. If you could show that other houses on the street have similar, adjacent to you have similar frontages. If you wanted to expand your front, things on your property, not only, you, you could use this as a way of showing why you're allowed to do that, even though your frontage isn't twenty-five feet. So now we go to the accessory. So I'm talking to the building inspector, and again, he's here. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Uh, number one, your structure, based on his office's opinion, does need a building permit at that size. I'm not saying you need one for all sizes, but it does need a building permit for that size.
Can I just, I think there was originally a miscommunication about the size. It is, uh, it does fall under the square footage. The building inspector originally had the idea that it was over two hundred square feet. It's not, it's not. So I just, we can deal with that later, but
Is it greater than a hundred and twenty square feet?
It is. It is a hundred and ten square feet. But then the, uh, the roof is, I don't have that number, because I did, exterior wall to exterior wall is above one twenty. But normally, when you judge, uh, everything I could find about measuring a shed, which is under.
Sorry, I wasn't, I, I was told it was over a hundred and twenty square feet, so I looked at two B, but one B and two B are the same. So let's go to accessory structures. Uh, so A talks about, um, how you can't be within a front yard area. So that's what everybody is, that's where everybody stopped. But B says that if you attach the, uh, the accessory structure to your house within ten feet, then you get the benefit of the principal structure's frontage exception.
Okay.
I went, I, I took the liberty, I did in your driveway, of walking down your driveway and looking up the street, and I noticed in my mind that if you started your shed from the closest point of your house to the sidewalk and went back, you, I noticed your yard goes down dramatically, and it certainly goes down at twenty-five feet, so you don't have, that's, that's clearly a hardship. But if you were to put it at that spot within ten feet, the slope is gradual, and you could build your shed against that. And again, I'm, please don't, I'm not trying to be patronizing when I say this. It seems that you could, that there's a, there's an entrance right there. I don't know if that's to the apartment that your mother would be in. But even the other one, you could, you could, you could pathway that to the shed there without using a sidewalk. And and not only do you not need a variance, but if the building inspector agrees that those other houses are within that other section, and he agrees with me that this exception works, which we haven't yet reached agreement, you can go, as long as you, as long as you, uh, provide a plan that shows that shed being within ten feet and attached, so you can decide how you're going to attach it.
Can I ask a question? I'm a little confused about what that means, within ten feet and attached. I don't totally understand that.
So basically, the front corner of this, right, so that's the part that we would take some creativity, but you're saying the front corner of the shed fits in the front corner of the house?
I'm sorry, I'm being, I'm being corrected to your benefit. The word or is in there, not and, so it'd be ten feet. So if you had it separated, but it was within ten feet, then you would comply with that provision. So either B, one or B of two. So how does that sound? How does that sound to you?
My only concern about that is that that side of the house is, we have a very steep, um, slate roof, and that side of the house is the south side of the house, and so all of our roof snowfall comes off right there.
Wait, 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 wait. But you're, effectively, it could be in the same, you're just saying it needs to be stepped back so that the front of the shed is in line with the front of our house, or the front
Yes, and it needs to be ten, no more than ten feet from your house.
Right, I think, I think there's a lot of ways that that would be easy. It's, it's pretty close now, but the, um, like, I could make the beams come out further or do, I mean, I could make it closer.
Roxanne, let me put it, let me put it another way.
Okay.
You've already done, you've already done something, and you're asking us to grant you a variance, which we hardly ever do, for something that you've already done, and it's a mistake.
Yeah.
That's a hard, that's swimming upstream already. So I looked through this, I looked through the code because I wanted you to be able to have your shed, but in a way that would conform with the code.
Yeah.
I totally appreciate that.
So I'm just letting you know that you, those are your two, those are kind of your two options.
I totally understand. I just actually was not understanding what you were saying.
Find any more questions you want. But anybody on the board, anybody on the board have anything else to say about that? You're okay with my doing this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna actually suggest that they just, so this is probably better.
Well, right, so we can keep the orientation as it is and just push it back. So that it meets
And over.
Yeah.
Closer to the house.
Right, right. Within ten feet of the house.
Yeah, I'll draw it.
That's not going to be a problem once we're moving it.
Here's your house, ten feet from the house, and then back from there. You have a clean line up in front.
Right. I think that that is very doable, and when I said I didn't think there was a place, that is definitely a place. I was under the impression that the twenty-five feet, once we got to there, there was nowhere else.
Understood.
That's doable. So, yeah.
All right. So procedurally, again, I'm not trying to put Mark Snow on the spot. We've had a conversation. Mark, you're welcome to speak or not. You can wait. If you're willing to do that, then I would, oh, Mark Snow, go ahead. Can we put Mark on?
Hi.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you for acknowledging me. I would just like to remind the board that, uh, in section two hundred dash six point two, B one A or clearly states that no accessory structure except a permitted sign or roadside stand shall be located within a required front yard area, and no accessory structure shall be located closer than three feet if the structure is less than a hundred and twenty square feet to any side or rear lot line. And if the structure is greater than or equal to a hundred and twenty square feet, uh, it would apply to the same, no, cannot be allowed in the front yard, and it would not be able to be any closer than ten feet from a side or rear property line. So I want to bring to the board's attention that that section is pretty clear that it states no accessory structure. And there is no exception to that. According to zoning ordinance is written. Now, certainly, uh, Chairman Singer and I have had a discussion in regards to the B, where it says an accessory structure attached to its principal structure or within ten feet of it shall be considered. Interpro par thereof, such shall the zoning ordinance has never been administered or enforced that way. It's been enforced and to be consistent with the enforcement, the way that it has been for years, and even prior to me coming in the inspector in reading field, it's always been that there's been no accessory structure in a front par setback. So I'd just like the board to understand that and realize that. And the other part that I would like the, uh, board to realize is, uh, there's different types of accessory structures. So if this is something that the board wishes to have happen, then I would recommend that the zoning ordinance would be amended to clarify those two sections. and to clarify what accessory structures are allowed or may not be allowed within that setback requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I just want to tell everybody who's listening, including especially the board. I have a great deal of respect for Mark Snow. He and I have these conversations often. And we don't, we don't see it the same way, but it doesn't mean we're not seeing same things just from a different perspective. So I'm gonna take my perspective now and move, I'm gonna move Mark's perspective to my perspective, using his perspective, if that, if that makes sense.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I just make one statement? Just want to point out to the board a legal term called administrative glass, learned in New Hampshire, that if, that if you interpret your ordinance a certain way, even if there's a new staff person that comes in later. You know, say you're a guy who works for twenty years and interprets an ordinance, section of ordinance a certain way, and the town has administered it that way. And then, uh, say a new person comes in and reads it differently. By that is term administrative glass, you still have to interpret it the way you did in the past, even with a new person. You can't change the interpretation over time. So the statement that Mr. Snow made that it's consistently been applied, no accessory structure in the front yard, that under the term administrative glass, a legal term, you can't change that. It has to be interpreted.
I'm not, I'm not changing it. I agree with you. Okay. No, no. Uh, I'll agree with Mark and you. No accessory structure shall be in the front yard setback. True. Okay.
Okay. Just one point. Thank you.
No, I, I will thank you for that. Okay.
Can I ask a question? Not going out and looking at job sites all the time, other than, you know, when we do this and not, for me, at what point does a front yard become a side yard?
A front yard becomes a side yard when the front yard setback per the zoning ordinance is matched. So say in the RA zone is twenty-five feet. Go back twenty-five feet, now you can consider this your side yard after the twenty-five feet.
There's no side yard problem here.
Okay. No, no, I'm just, I, I, I'm just curious, you know, to be the side yard side of the house.
So if you went, if you went back twenty-five feet, and then you came back fifteen feet, the point where that means is beginning of side yard.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so going back to five, going back to five point two. We define, we, there is a definition out there that says, if you can show the building inspector that adjoining lots have shorter distances, which I'm representing this does, there's a, there's two, if not three of them. Then the principal residence's setback for expansion, for example, become, can become that setback line. Now, the building inspector has to say it's okay. You have to bring the evidence to him and he could deny it. I'm not saying he doesn't have the expression. But that's how I read it. Okay. So that's the definition of principal residence setback. Now we go to B. So now we go to A, the, the provision that Mark read. He says, he read, shall be located within a required front yard area. The word required. In B, it says, an accessory structure attached to its principal structure or within ten feet of it shall be considered an integral part thereof, shall be, not maybe. And as such, shall be subject to the front yard requirements, that's the same verb, same adjective, whatever, applicable to the principal residence. Principal residence gets the benefit of a shortened front yard setback. Now, to answer Eric's, uh, concern and Mark's concerns. Therefore, the shed is not in the front yard with my suggestion. The front yard has now been shrunk and it's not within that front yard. It's, it's, it's within the front yard that's been made available to this house because of the fact it lives in a neighborhood that has shorter front yards and therefore gets to be considered. And again, I, this is Mark's call and I'm just saying that I would rather continue the variance and see if they can work something out. And, um, then that's what my goal is. I'm not trying to, I don't know if the board, the board doesn't have the right, I don't think, I mean, I, I'm interpreting it. Maybe the board can agree to interpret it, or at least give Mark a chance. But that's, that's, those are the words, principal, that's how I do it. And I, and it works. Now, it may not be what was intended for other things like swimming pools and things that now suddenly we don't necessarily want three feet from the curb kind of thing. And I think when Mark and I talked about it, I said, well, what's written is what we interpret. And the problems that we anticipate are for the council or the planning board to amend. So I'm just bringing that as a straight line, trying to help them. Because a variance is a big thing, a big leap. And if we granted in the variance, guess what? They would be way up in the, in the zone. And I don't know how that would help anybody because that's not making it less intrusive if we do that. So it just, all, all it really means to me is that we have to deny it. And I feel like I'd rather not. So, um, that's, that's my, that's my take. So.
Thank you.
Well, I haven't, it's really up to the board to.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the effort, the energy you've put into this.
Mr. Chairman, just one statement, just for clarification for the board. So I mean, there's only two options. Uh, you either approve or deny this application of a variance, or you're allowed to withdraw without prejudice. You cannot make the decision on the front yard exception.
Right.
Or the other, only the inspector of buildings can make that decision.
We can continue the hearing.
You can continue the hearing. Correct. Or i- i- if, if it's going that way, he could drop, withdraw without prejudice, or you can make a decision on the variance.
So again, I, I'm gonna say it a hundred times, Mark, might be steaming on the other side of that flat picture image there, but I would rather see them go to the building inspector and make application for what I'm saying and see what they could work out. If you, if we continue the hearing, then it means that next month it'll be on the agenda again. You don't have to reapply. But, um, but getting a variance under these circumstances isn't so simple. Or you could withdraw the application, which means you're not prejudiced by, because if we were to deny it, you couldn't come back for two years. This way, if you withdraw it, you can go to the building inspector, try to work something out. If you're not happy, you could appeal the building inspector's decision to us as well. And then we do have jurisdiction over whether we think it's right or not.
Okay. And it seems like, based on what you're saying, that you, wait, so the decision you'd have to make today is you'd have to deny it or continue it?
If we deny it, you have no, you can't come back for two years.
Mark, based on what Mark said, it doesn't sound too promising that he was.
Yeah, but if he denies it, you can appeal it to us.
Right. If we withdraw without prejudice now.
Right.
If we continue it, I can't do that.
No, if you continue it, you can do that too, but then we'll decide, we'll decide the variance.
Continuing it sounds good because I'll, by the next meeting, we'll have an answer. We'll have progress on this.
You can also still withdraw even after the meeting. I mean, I'll take a vote. When it comes to our chance, we can, we can allow you as a board to, to withdraw. So we could vote.
Right. If he, if he approves the permit for what you said, I'll, I'll withdraw that, continue this, this appeal, of course.
All right. So how's the board feel? This is, I mean, uh, informally, do we feel okay about letting this happen?
Give them a time.
Do this. Are people okay with my bringing this on? Thank you. So we're gonna, we'll, so why don't we make a motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing for, uh, one ten James Street.
One month.
For one month.
Second, yes. Any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your ayes have it, it's unanimous. All right, you have a month. Good luck.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody need a break? Let's keep moving. Uh, are they back yet? Is it seven fifteen?
Eight, seven twenty-eight. So yes, I, I came back to the map then.
Okay, um, so let's do the deliberation of the application of Cameron Ward. And can somebody make a motion? I'll say to approve the application for a special permit, let's put it that.
I'll make a motion to move the application of Cameron Ward for a property located three oh five Wells Street, accessories map eighty-eight, lot eighteen, which is located in the general industrial zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash eight point three and two hundred dash eight point four and appendix A tables use of zoning ordinance in order to allow a ca- cafe slash lounge at this location with the following conditions.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Chairman. Is there a second?
Thank you. You don't have the help I can get, Eric. I took the liberty of writing down some conditions, but if there's others, I'll listen to them first. Anyone else have any? No? All right. So the first question is, is it, so, um, on, oh, um, add the language to the motion, friendly amendment as amended by the application to include the extra, to include the quarantine area. All right. So that's, all in favor of making that amendment to the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So is it personal to this, is it personal to Cameron and his group, or do we want to make it, uh, a special permit that runs with the site? What we're really doing, just so you rethink of it, this is a, this is kind of a, maybe it should be allowed in this zone, but nobody thought of it yet. So it wasn't listed as something that would be in here as a matter of right. The reason, right, the reason it's a special permit is because it's not listed.
Correct.
So do we think it's the kind of business that, you know, is it, does it meet the general standards of that district? So that we don't, then it could run with the land. So, but if we think there's something a little different or, or individual about this, maybe it should run with the people.
I would, I would recommend that we run it with the people, just because it involves animals. Which, you know, while, you know, which they are responsible while they're, while they're there. And, you know, we've, we've met them, they're here, you know what they've done for the application, we read through their business plan. If, if they were to sell the building and then that permit handed over to somebody else, I would feel better knowing that those people come forward, ask for the special permit again, and make sure that they have the same, you know, plan and thought process in regards to, um, the business as opposed to, um, yeah.
Running with the property.
Running with the property. I, I would feel better having that.
So how, how, help me, who, who would be the, who would be those people that we? Debbie, help me with that. So Cameron, I'm sorry, your name. Kelly Goddard? Yes. Anybody else that you want to add to this that you think?
Unless you just want to honor Cameron, why he owns the building as well, that's.
Okay.
That makes sense because he, you know.
That's his property owner. And then if somebody sold the cafe apart, turn that back into a bathroom, whatever needed to be for you guys to deal with that.
But once Cameron disassociates with the business on any level, you say, I'm, okay, but if you say, I'm, you say, you say, I'm tired of this, you can stay there. But I'm, I'm not part of this anymore. But you're not a corporation, so we don't have that to do it. Then technically, if you succeed him, you'd have to come in and ask us if it's okay for you to continue the special permit. Okay. So that's going to be part of the. So Cat, we'll put Cameron's name as the person with the condition that upon his giving up, uh, ownership or control of the business, then the new person who has ownership or force control will have to come again before there's no. My second one was, you know, my, the standard, well, cats only, I guess, is, is one thing, right?
And you're sperm lab related as well?
Yeah. And according to, it's according to the, the bill, it's according to everything that's been submitted, including this, including the amended application. So you'll, it'll be subject to all the things that you've represented or what you're going to do. I mean, I guess technically the animal control officer oversees all of this, so we don't have to incorporate it, but and that's it. Those are my conditions. I, I can't think of any special conditions. You were so heavily regulated that I would miss one, so I don't even want to. I don't even want to go there. I'm glad you are regulated because if, the first meeting, that's what, that was the biggest problem, is how do we regulate? We don't have to. So except to incorporate everything. So if you violate the state or I guess any law, then you're, you're violating the special permit. Okay.
Anyone have anything to add to that? If they do, I'll add it and then we can just go again, make sure we're all.
Nobody else has anything else to add?
Dedicated, actually, just to be clear, that this document, I don't think.
The first application, what we saw first, as amended by this, is all incorporated.
I just want to make sure, because I see yours.
You know, that's a good point. I drew a sketch, which, uh, maybe I can give to, oh, I do have another condition. But yes, we, it'll be the sketch that was, was submitted for the amended application.
And you got a, did you get a copy of that, Eric? Or do, okay, yes.
And we can say that, we could say there's something specifically, we, we can refer to the quarantine areas being, you know, six by nine space, separate from the, uh, main space as shown on the, on the site plan. And I would like to condition it on that, I mean, obviously you own the space, you'll do as you see fit, but I'd like the permit to only say that the animals have to be transported outside. Once you know an animal is not well. I mean, unless it's, unless it's not right to do it. But on any, on most days, if you see an animal that's in trouble, that animal is moved to the quarantine area outside. So that you don't. We're the if, we're the if squad. So that's how, that's how we do this. Yeah. So it's the outside movement. That was, that was the, they'll take, you know, all necessary steps, whatever words you need. That would be the first choice. All right. Thanks, Debbie.
Let me read through these the way I have them written and see if I want to make any changes to that.
Please, yes.
All right. So with the following conditions, um, as, uh, as amended, as amended by the, the business plan last updated on March twenty-seven, twenty-five, and the packet submitted to Eric, along with the drawing showing the new layout with the quarantine area. Um, the permit will run with Cameron Ward. Um, if Cameron sells the property or gives up interest in the business.
Control.
Gives up control. This is why we go over this. Over control in the business, a new permit will be needed. If the business is going to continue to exist, this is for cats only. And any animal needing quarantine must be moved to the quarantine area via outside access.
Oh, the outside to, from one place to the other, as you said?
Yeah, must be, must be moved to quarantine area via outside access.
Thank you. Well, not be outside access, but the movement must be outside. So the movement from the main spot to the, must be all outside. There is an outside access. I see what you're saying. All right. I just.
Cats that need to be contained shall be moved from the outside to the containment area.
Yeah. Moving the outside. Yes. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
My garbage, but okay.
That's good. Garbage is fine. It's just a matter of clarity. Hey, okay. So we're good, right?
Yeah. Just for clarification, um, I had three conditions. And the first thing Debbie said I had as part of the motion being amended. Not as a condition. So I had three conditions, special permit run with the landowner, Mr. Ward gives up any control of the business, the new business owner, which would have to come back before the board. Only cats and cats that need to be contained shall be moved from the outside to the containment.
Is that four things that you have?
Uh, three. And then the, as amended, uh, friendly amendment to the.
I think we're just trying to make sure that we're referencing the documents we were given today and viewed today.
All right.
Or, or that it's, it, not today, but that we're referencing this package as opposed to anything we received previous.
So I think she's clarifying, she's clarifying what the amended.
What I meant by.
The motion, the motion includes the amended, uh, the amended area. So the, so in other words, the, the motion starts off with Cameron wants to do something uh, on the site as his, as, as per the application, but he's now amending the application. So we have to make reference to the application, right? So you, you can, Eric, so.
He hasn't really amended the application. He just provided additional information. The only thing amended is the cat containment area. A new area, everything else is.
So do you want to say he amended the site plan?
amended the site plan.
Yes. Thank you.
I just want the record to show that was, that the site plan was amended. So that, so that for his sake and our sake, we know where the permit rests.
And what, and what viewpoint we're looking at when we decided that.
Thank you. Good words. We're doing good with words tonight. All right. Anything else? All right. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let the record show it was unanimous. Congratulations. Everybody asked me about the cat found. Now I can say it's been permitted.
Guys, I'll teach it.
There's, there is a twenty day appeal period. It doesn't seem like anybody has any problem with it, so it's unlikely anyone will appeal. But if that appeal were to take place and you were to lose on the appeal, then you would.
With town people?
Your neighbors, your, your, somebody out, somebody who is standing in your neighborhood could appeal this to somebody, suddenly find out about it, not like it, appeal. So you have twenty days after we submit our decision. Or that's, that's waived. But any work you do, any money you're spending, you've already spent money, you're doing at the risk that somebody might appeal. Give me a warning. But any work you do, any money you're spending, you already spent money, you're doing it at the risk that somebody might appeal. Give me a warning, which see fit, but that's just so you know.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Alright, thanks.
Good luck. Okay, can I hear a motion on the application of Nathan Lupo?
Make a motion to approve the application of. Nathan Lupo for property located at Wild Map Avenue, assessors map 129. Lot nine, which is located in the suburban residential RB zoning district, a special permit pursuant to sections 200 dash 5.3 E2. 200 dash 8.3 and 200 dash 8.4 of the zoning orders in order to allow. A 20% reduction of the required 15 foot side yard setback at this location. With the following conditions.
Back here a second.
Second.
Um, the only condition I have, it's per the. Survey plan that was submitted. It's per the plans that were submitted to the application. Anything else anybody has?
Yeah, I actually think, I actually. Personally, I don't live in the neighborhood, but I like the idea that you guys extended it's supposed to go nuts. I think it keeps the same character of, you know, they're all ranches.
It's a nice neighborhood.
I think, I think it's perfect use of this. Support zoning markets. Okay, any, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let the record show it's unanimous. Again, there's a 20 day appeal period. I don't think you have to worry about anything. You could hit your building permit and start construction, so.
You won't have any free rear.
You never know, but. You start getting things moved. I usually get, we don't get that. You don't?
And it's a June 4th.
Is it there?
I have.
Can we wait? These are the minutes from the special meeting, right?
Yes.
I'd like to prove that, I'd like to prove that at the next meeting. So is it?
I'll make a motion. I will make a motion to extend the approval of the minutes for June 4th, 2025 to June 13th, 2025.
You don't really need to make a motion on that?
No.
That could be a short meeting.
You can do that.
We need to talk about.
Discussing about July meeting and August meeting.
Hold the, there's a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. Okay, second, alright. Hold that, I'm gonna hold that in advance. I, I'm. So Eric asked me what I think, so I'm running it by you. I think that Eric has some things on for July. It's soon enough, but then we take off, no, no meeting in August, so we'll get two months off. Does that work?
Yeah. Be most of July.
Yeah, thank you.
Too, but we couldn't do it.
No meetings in July.
No, no, meeting in July.
I, I won't be here.
What is our, and that would be the second Thursday?
July 10th.
Then our next month be September, same, you know, 10th.
I'm on vacation September. Right now I don't have any plans to, it'll be the 11th. I don't have any plans to be gone, but that may change. So I'll let you know about that. Just as a heads up, it might not be anything, but.
On a practical level, I just want to get the cell tower. Once we get that done, I don't think. And the aromatic thing is moving through the system, but that wouldn't come to us until September or October anyway, if, if that happens.
So July 10th is a 10 of the EBA.
It's a, it's a, no, there is a, there is somebody who has made application.
Yeah, it's a definite.
Uh, also, just, everybody saw the picture of the fence that went up at Art Street.
Yes, that was great.
Yes, nice. We do good things as a company. Does anybody have any sense, any kind of a difference with Sam?
I was there today and the condensers were on and I could barely hear him. When I took pictures.
Yeah, well, well, French company put in, so it wasn't perfectly.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. What are we talking about this other stuff for?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Hockey game, 8 o'clock tonight.
Okay, let the record show was unanimously unanimous. Alright, good meeting. Thank you.
That was nice.
So.